Good evening. This regular meeting of March 18th, 2024, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Jacob Bitzkizire.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
We're happy to welcome some students from Bryant to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after they sing us a song.
My name is Tara. Third grade.
My name is Emily. Ten, nine, eight, seven, eight.
Seventh grade Wesley Morrison.
My name is Elliot Morrison. I'm in fourth, fifth grade.
Camie Reiner in kindergarten.
My name is Gailie and I'm in fourth grade. All right.
Yeah.
I'm a Bryant Bulldog and I'm made for success. Every day I will try my best. There will be hard days, but I don't need to fear because I belong here. I must work hard, listen to what others say, and persevere along the way. I believe in you. I believe in me. I can learn. Everyone will see. I'm a Bryant Bulldog and I'm made for success. Every day I will try my best. Be respectful, responsible, and safe each day. Why? Because it's the Bryant way. I believe I can learn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey.
Thank you.
Awesome job. I love it. I love it. Thank you. Do traditions. I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 12th, the special board meeting on February 15th, the special meeting of February 26th, and the special meeting of March 4th, 2024, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 12th, the special board meeting of February 15th, the special meeting of February 26th, and the special meeting of March 4th, 2024, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Well, that brings us to Board Salutes. I believe there are some Board Salutes around the table.
I have a Board Salute.
Go for it.
A Board Salute and a Bravo go to the more than 75 students in the cast, crew, and pit orchestra involved in Hempstead High School production of the musical Anastasia. The acting, musicianship, choreography, set and lighting design were remarkable, and the show was an outstanding example of the vibrant, fine arts that remain alive in our schools across the district. Congratulations to all involved in bringing this show to life.
That was a wonderful show.
It was a wonderful show.
Thank you. Excellent.
I'll go next. A Board Salute goes to the Roosevelt Robo Raptors Robotics Team for their outstanding work at the Iowa Championship. The team was one of the only seventh-grade teams at the event, which was largely made of older students. The Roosevelt Raptors, Robo Raptors, sorry, were well-prepared for the judges' interviews and effectively answered all questions. Despite facing tough competition and challenging matchups, the dedicated team persevered and delivered impressive results. As representatives of the Dubuque Community Schools and the Roosevelt Community, the Robo Raptors made us proud. Congratulations to them on a job well done. Next up, our high school robotics team, Servos, begins their season this week on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in Cedar Falls. Good luck to them as they start their season.
What a tongue twister. Robo Raptors.
Yes, okay. I've got one. A Board Salute goes to the Dubuque Senior Speech Team for its outstanding showing at the 2024 Iowa State High School Association Individual Event. The team received overall Division One ratings and 46 performances and an amazing 26 Outstanding Performance nominations to the 2024 Individual Event All-State Festival, which will be held March 25th at the University of Northern Iowa. This earned the Senior Varsity Team the IHSSA Individual Event Sweepstakes Trophy for the 12th consecutive year, given to the school with the most nominations to the festival. It also makes Dubuque Senior only the second team in IHSSA history to win both the Large Group and Individual Event Sweepstakes Trophy in the same year and the only school to do it more than once. So congratulations to all. Feel like we're always congratulating the speech team of ours. Excellent. Great work. All right, thank you, Board members.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we're happy to welcome Megan Richardson, the principal of Bryant Elementary, to tell us what's going well in Bryant.
We should probably make her sing solo.
Do your remarks in song.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. A few things. First of all, our Bulldog Pledge. We went to a professional learning communities at work conference, and one of the things that it talked about with building community was not only having a motto or something, but writing a pledge. So I wrote the pledge, but then my music teacher, Mrs. Sellers, she turned it into a song for us. So we sing it every Monday and Wednesday on the announcements, and then we also sing it at our monthly assemblies. And it's been really neat. I have parents sending me videos of their kid, you know, standing at home singing it. So I think it's been something the kids have loved. Also, something that's going well is our fifth-grade career cafes. We do those once a month so that students can learn different things about different opportunities when they get older. And so far, we've had a librarian from Carnegie Stout come, a graphic designer, a magician balloon twister, a lab technician, Nitro the Police Dog, a business manager at McGraw-Hill, a manager of a freight and trailer semi, a salesman. So we have had an awful lot of different careers come, and I think it's been a wonderful experience for our fifth graders. Something else that's been really exciting is we have a student leadership team at Bryant made up of our fifth graders. And this year, they decided to do a fundraiser and raise money to tie blankets for Harmony Dubuque. So each classroom got to tie blankets with our student leadership team. Then Harmony Dubuque came to our school, and we got to give them straight to Harmony Dubuque. Then we actually had some money left over, and our student leadership team decided to give some money to the United Way, to the Humane Society. And one of our teachers goes over and helps at a school in Ghana, and they are building a new middle school, and they needed some supplies. So it was really neat to help our community, but then also help the world at large as well. So, and then finally, with our staff, something that's really going well this year is, again, our professional learning communities. We were working really hard at those this year, and something we're doing inside of those are our No Understand Do, our KUD charts. And it has been some of the most phenomenal professional development that we have had this year. I feel like it's really not only helped our classroom, or, excuse me, our grade-level teams, but obviously all of our students as well. So lots of great things going on at Bryant, and I wanted to give everybody. In our pledge, it says, "I believe I can learn." So every student has one of these, and we wear them to our assemblies once a month. So just so that you guys know, the Bulldogs believe in all of you, and we're thankful for what you do. We've got one of these for you guys, too. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you're good. You're good.
We don't bite our head.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Megan.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming. I believe next, there's a presentation from Synergistic.
Good evening, and thank you. Thank you from everyone at Synergistic for the faith that you demonstrated in us about five years ago in allowing us to come and partner with you in energy conservation. Well, I'll say the same thing that I said to Mr. Kelleher here a few weeks ago, or try to elicit the same. I'll make the same request. Can we get some DNA samples from you? We could do, our country could do with cloning you. Anyway, all of that said, I do mean it sincerely. Thank you, though, for the privilege of allowing us to work with you. We're proud of what this program has accomplished here in Dubuque. We're especially proud of you because without you, without your leadership, without your support, the things that we're about to talk about would not have happened. And that's 20 years of experience in this business, speaking and working with about 1,500 clients over those 20 years. Again, you've done it right. And so thank you for allowing us to get to be a part of that. I have a very short presentation. I just really want to touch on maybe a couple of slides. I know that you have copies of it. But we've had the privilege of getting to talk with Mr. Kelleher about the potential for us continuing our partnership for another five years. And so I do want to touch a little bit on that. But to start off with, if we can go to the next slide, Slide 2. This is just a quick summary of what this program has accomplished in a little less than five years now. Over $2 million in cost of audit savings. In other words, that's money you did not send to a utility company because of that next number of the fact that you were able to reduce your raw consumption of energy. And this is just energy, not counting what you've been able to reduce also in water consumption. 24% reduction in energy consumption per square foot. That's related to electricity and natural gas, and that is outstanding. There have been nearly 5,000 building audits conducted by the embedded energy specialists that we placed. But the far-right number is another one, though. I especially want to camp out on for just a little bit. This is third-party validation of what we're saying that you've accomplished. It's one thing for us to tell you that you're doing well. It's another thing for the Environmental Protection Agency, through Energy Star, tell you that you have accomplished something. As I was mentioning to someone earlier this evening, earning that kind of recognition is harder today than it was 15 years ago simply because the Energy, the Environmental Protection Agency is working hard to make sure that you do not achieve that recognition at the expense of the integrity of your learning environment. You have earned that and protected your learning environment at the same time. So again, so much to be proud of. And all of this, it couldn't have come at maybe a better time or a worse time, depending upon how you want to look at it. Since 2019, the year before we began working with you, your electricity rates have increased by over 20%, your natural gas rates about 40%, and your water and sewer rates 17%. Imagine again what you would have been spending had you not been able to reduce that consumption of those resources. As a matter of fact, you don't have to imagine very hard. It totals up over the last over four years, almost five years, over $2 million that you've been able to avoid in spending. If we can move on to, go ahead and go to the next slide, if you don't mind. I want to leave plenty of time for questions. This is a summary of the proposal that we've delivered to Mr. Kelleher and his staff here over the last couple or three months. And what we've proposed is an extension of our partnership for an additional five years. But I want to emphasize, this is not going into maintenance mode. This is not a maintenance agreement that we're talking about. We will be staying actively engaged. We will continue to have own staff here at Dubuque full-time, an energy specialist that's responsible for ensuring that everything that you've been doing, we continue to do. That's accountability that results in the results that you're looking for and that you've contracted with us for. Now, again, I emphasize that it's not a maintenance agreement because we're also reducing the rate as we go into this five-year extension. But again, don't equate a rate reduction with any reduction in what you have come to expect from Synergistic and the embedded staff that we have here in your organization. In addition to the ongoing benefits that we expect the district to continue to see, I want to point out that we're not a company that stands still. We've been around for 38 years, but, and while fundamentally we do the same things that we were doing 38 years ago, and that is helping you do better with what you already have. We're also a company that's also utilizing new technology, leveraging technology that wasn't available to us years ago. I can remember 20 years ago telling people that this wasn't rocket science. Well, guess what? It's rocket science today. And we've got the software, proprietary software, to prove it. But there is software that we will be continuing to apply here and are continuing to try to make available to the district, especially some software that's designed to help our clients make smarter decisions about things that they are thinking about doing in the future, whether it's capital projects or strategic changes in the way some facilities are being operated. That's just some of the software that we're adding. We've updated, created our own energy accounting software that we're also making available to our clients, energy accounting software that is much more user-friendly and something that our clients are even using as they're trying to do their budgeting and things of that nature. Those are just some examples of some things that you will continue to benefit from as we continue to grow. You get all of that, part and parcel, along with all of our expertise, our folks that are coming in here and working alongside your folks. So with that, I apologize, I probably spoke too long. Are there any questions, though, that I can answer for you?
No, I think we all can say we appreciate the partnership and what you have done to help us to save resources. And so we appreciate it and look forward to many more saving opportunities.
And we want to thank Josh Poseyak, who's been working with the district maybe just over a year. Just about a year, and he's doing a wonderful job, and we appreciate all the attention and full-time focus he's given us.
Exactly.
I think we ought to also acknowledge, Kevin, was it you and Bill Burkhart who were our first connectors with Synergistic? Bill was then the head of Buildings and Grounds and Kevin as CFO. And what a partnership it's been. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And I mean it. You've been a privilege to work with, and we do thank you for it very much. I wish everybody was like you.
Thank you.
As I told Kevin the other day, I would send my grandkids to this school district.
Oh.
We need every grandkid coming this way.
My test used to be whether or not I would send my kids here. Now it's my grandkids. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's an even better compliment, grandchildren. All right, well, if there's anyone else who would like to address the board, they may do so at this time. We ask that you state your full name, your connection to the district, and to limit your remarks to three minutes using our timer. I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. I'm just going to throw my agenda on the ground, but I do know that we are now at the point where Ms. Whitman will give us an update from the Facilities and Support Services Committee.
Thank you. We had our meeting March 4th at 4:00 in the afternoon, and as always, we covered many different topics. I'll just highlight a few, and then I have a few, three motions to vote on. Purchase professional service contracts. Kobe told us it's time to, the data vision. There's a five-year subscription licensing that we are looking to renew. Then we had an update on current district projects. Senior high school, 96% complete. So we're looking, hopefully, by the time school starts in the fall or near that, that the project will be finished. And so far, we've always been in budget, and I hope we continue at the end. Sageville Elementary School project, construction of the solar project is complete. And we're still waiting on the final approval from Alliant to start up the array. Lincoln Elementary School Outdoor Wellness Project, all projects and pieces have been ordered with construction to start in June, and that project will be finished by the time school starts. Senior high school Dazzle Field scoreboard replacing, replacement. We're wrapping up that scoreboard, and that, you know, I'm not sure. I think it's almost done, or it will be done for track season, and maybe it is completely done by now. So that's exciting, and it's a great big scoreboard. I'm looking forward to seeing it.
It looks beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up. It looks beautiful.
Preschool renovation project. Site work has started. Food service equipment was put up for bid, and recommendation, also for, the recommendation for that food service was done by Rob Powers to go with the Wilson Restaurant Supply Incorporated, and that vote was approved to go with that company. Audubon play school replacement, parts and pieces are ordered and should be here in May, and that also will be worked on during the summer months and will be finished probably within a couple of weeks. So both of those playground equipments, we're hoping to have them done soon so the kids can enjoy those spaces in the summer and be completely ready when school starts. Review a grant of easement that, for Jefferson property, it's, there's a utility easement that we're granting some property back to the city for a utility easement that they can work on. It's a real small piece of property near Jefferson. Synergistic, we just had that update, and we are looking forward. Kevin Kelleher has recommended that we renew this contract we have with Synergistic, so we are looking forward to more savings, and thank you for the presentation. Update on middle school consolidation. We have a team of staff working on budgeting for next year, and there's not a lot of information to give right now, but we are forming different committees, always talking about consolidation, and see, just waiting for budgeting to come and see where we, what we can do. So that is on top of mind all the time, to continue with those conversations. And there's a couple more motions. There was very little change in student fees and the facility rental fees. Either no changes or very minimal, so we'll be approving that tonight. And EMC Insurance has sent a questionnaire to Rob Powers and his group that they have to fill out. It's related to the age of roofs and HVAC equipment, and they're looking to complete that by April. And I will read the motions. I move the Board of Education approve the grant for easement for Jefferson property.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve grant of easement for Jefferson property. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2024-2025 school year.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2024 and 2025 school year.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. Thank you for that committee report.
You're welcome. We're always very happy to not raise fees. So whenever possible, that's our goal. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. So that brings us to the Educational Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Jones.
Thank you. I just wanted to start with letting everybody know that we do have a new evening and time that we are meeting for the educational programs. It's going to be on the first Wednesday of every month, and that's at 4:00 p.m. right here in the forum. So we invite everybody to come. First up, we heard from the district mentor and visual arts instructional support lead, Brad Modernock. Brad and a diverse group of staff participated in a curriculum study for virtual arts in grades K through 12 and have recommended the district purchase the new curriculum, which is both diverse and culturally appropriate. The new program is titled Art of Education and will allow the teachers to have a range of flexibility and a lot of variety to mix in with their lesson plans. Next, we also heard from Chelsea Cox, who is the new executive director of Foundation of Dubuque Public Schools. She reported that the Foundation of Dubuque Public Schools has donated $1.9 million to Dubuque Community School District since 2013. This money has provided funding for everything from transportation, field trips, and basic needs for our kids. Their annual fundraising event is being held this Wednesday, March 20th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Diamond Joe Harbor Room. So if you haven't already gotten your tickets, please do so. And lastly, we just reviewed five policies, and I think that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for that report. We're trucking right along to new business.
I move that the Board of Education expel student number 1795673147 and student 1805561116 from attending school in the Dubuque Community School District.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education expel student number 1795673147 and student number 1805561116 from attending school in the Dubuque Community School District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student 1236379266 at this time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 1236379266 at this time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Just wondering, Superintendent Hawkins, if you could comment. We don't expel students very often, and I understand so much of it is confidential. Can you say anything about the process? Can you say anything about the process that goes through on that?
Sure. When there's a disciplinary issue, those recommendations come from the building level principal. And then we look at lots of factors when we are making those decisions about what's best for the student. And really, we're looking at grades, credits. We're looking at behavior, and then obviously looking at the incident that occurred. And then through that, we have different conversations with students and staff and families, and then work to find the best decision for that student. And really, I mean, our goal is that we want all students to graduate from high school. And so we try to work out a plan so that if we do expel that student, there's a reentry plan sooner than the one-year timeline so that we can get them back enrolled in our buildings and get them into graduation. So granted, that's a lot of work on every end, from our end, the students' end, and the families' end, but we try to work together to make sure that we do what's best to get them to the finish line.
I appreciate that. That kind of effort goes into it on all parts, and that our end goal is to get the kid back in school.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to any board member or administrative issues?
So I would just like to just, really quickly, I should have said this when we talked about the consent agenda, but tonight I'm anxious to see that we officially hired Rich Hatcher as a new principal at Kennedy Elementary School